For the Board of Trustees in the Town of Buena Vista. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Lacy?
Yes.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Pae?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Bogey?
Yes.
Okay, would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Before you is the agenda. So we want to do, adopt the agenda, and are there any clarifications, modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve or approve as amended.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dave.
Second, that.
Second, Fay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments pertaining to the consent agenda? I would like to point out, and there are more than several. For people joining, reappointing for the Recreation Advisory Board, and then also, Mark, congratulations. It looks like planning and zoning is full up, I assume. Everything's looking good. We appreciate everybody stepping forward to do that. Are there any other questions or comments for consent agenda? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Devin.
Again.
Second, Swisher. I will ask for a roll call, please, Paula.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Pae? Trustee Nyberg? Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Bogey?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. And again, I want to welcome everybody on board that has been reappointed or appointed. Next item is public comment. There are several ways that you can sign in here. You can raise your hand. You can come in in question in chat. You can use your phone by pressing star nine, and then the meeting host will turn you on to speak. I believe, Paula, you had some that you had mentioned might speak tonight, but I don't see anybody here. Am I correct?
Yeah, I don't see the number that he called in listed there in the display, nor his name, so.
Okay.
Just a quick check. Mike, do you see anything?
I don't see any movement.
I don't see anything either. Okay, I'll close public comment. Next would be staff reports. Town Administrator, Philip?
They always catch me off guard. Good evening, everyone. We'll start with pleasantries while I scroll to the report. Right. Oh, page thirty-six of the packet is my report, and just want to start off by saying thank you all for sticking with this crazy year. But wow, a lot of effort from our board, our staff, and all the volunteers that help with town. Thank you. Even through a pandemic, it's amazing what we can accomplish, and I'm very, very proud of us as a whole and a community. So thank you all for that, and we'll jump into a few things here. So just a reminder, upcoming holidays, we do, our town offices will be closed December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday, Friday, and then January first, which is a Friday. We do have quite a bit of vacation. People taking a little bit of time at the end of the year. So we'll have coverage on the days we're open, but we're looking forward to taking a little bit of a breath. So that's coming up. And then already looking into 2021, we'll get off to a quick start. Jack and his team will join us for a work session for planning on, before the regular meeting on the twelfth. They'll go through a full year report for 2020. Great, great opportunity to understand a little bit at a deeper level how the funding at the airport works, and specifically, some of the impacts financially from our testing. So looking forward to that work session. And I communicated with our municipal court team today, and we'll be looking to invite them to a board meeting in early 2021. Now that our new personnel have about a year, a year into it, I think it's a good time to meet up with them and hear how everything's going and kind of build that relationship I was hoping to build with our municipal court team. So lots going on there and more, so I don't think it's going to be a quiet year ahead. Going into 2021 as well, we do kick off our community grant program. And Joseph Typle and the Community Foundation, they're starting to get the word out that that grant cycle will be starting up. The main ask for tonight is to see if any trustees are interested in serving with that committee. Last year, trustee Mark Jenkins served in that role, and it was very, very beneficial. He was able to bring some perspective from the town, from the board, and specifically really pointing towards the the comprehensive plan, excuse me, the 2015 comprehensive plan, and really helping that committee make good investment decisions with our grant funds. So if there's anybody right away that's interested, I'll take that now. If we want to think about it and bring it back up in trustee staff, we can do that, too. So I'll pause.
Dave moved. I saw him move.
Somebody twitched.
Trustees be thinking about that, and we will bring it back up in trustee staff. Philip?
Thank you. All right, moving ahead, BV Fire, so one of the themes for tonight. So just to recognize, we had a great work session before this regular meeting tonight with our BV Fire team to go over some budget points and clarification and looking ahead into what we're trying to accomplish in 2021. But I also want to mention that staff, which includes interim chief Chris Green and myself, we have opened up conversation with Chaffey County Fire Chief Bertram. And we're really opening up the discussions towards what are the possibilities between our two agencies. Recognizing we have, we only have so many resources, so many dollars, so many personnel resources. And so what could, what could it look like if we start to talk about ways to leverage each other's resources? And ultimately, where things are kind of going with that, and what we think would be the most beneficial would be something, would be a fire authority kind of concept. This is still very early in the discussions, and that's why I'm bringing it to your attention tonight. This is not the first time that these kind of conversations have been had between BV and Chaffey County Fire or other agencies in the county. So I want to recognize that this is no small thing. But we're, I'm going to just say I'm pretty optimistic that approaching it this time around with the mindset of we're not looking for one agency to take over the other. If you kind of step back and look at what we accomplished this year across the county with the Housing Authority, which is creating a new, essentially a new government agency to specialize in an area that has oversight from elected officials within the county. That's a similar concept to what a fire authority could provide. Granted, there's a lot of assets and funding and service level agreements and things like that that would go into something like a fire authority. But I included in the packet some of the opportunities, I'll call them, that going into these conversations, Chris and I have started documenting, and I think they'll resonate with you all. You know, looking at how do we long-term create a sustainable staffing model? Now again, what we talked about tonight in our work session, we think a reserve program is a great way to bridge between what we've had from a volunteer program into something that will work for us in 2021. But it's a bigger picture. It's a bigger, longer-term challenge than just that. And how do we create, and not just how many people we can have servicing the community, but how do we create a structure that is going to be appealing and will allow us to retain people resources as well? So just think about creating the depth of an organization, allowing people to have different experiences in the fire profession, allowing them to get involved with different service calls, things like that. So it's, you know, it's looking at how many, how do we get more people with a very limited budget? But also, how do we create a position that is more in line with what you would see in traditional fire departments? And then kind of looking at how do we serve the community? So looking at things like response time plus having the right number of people responding. And then again, how do we, how do we use our resources, financial resources and assets to better our community as a whole, not just in town, but outside of town as well? So I guess for tonight, what I'm kind of looking for is an initial, initial thought from, thoughts from the board. This is, this would be a pretty big project, pretty big undertaking, because it's essentially, we would have some more internal discussions, but then come back to the board with some findings, some initial findings, and basically a proposal to move forward. And we would look to set up an IGA between the agencies so that we can move forward in confidence, because it's going to take time, and it's going to take legal resources to set something like this up. So, you know, before we just bring a presentation to you one night, kind of a few steps before that, are there any initial concerns with staff pursuing this? And, you know, I've listed some of the kind of the high-level opportunities and expectations going into this discussion. If there's any thoughts from the board, I'll certainly take them now, especially if there's a strong concern with this approach. And sorry, one more thing, I do want to point out, it's written in there, but I think it's important for the public to hear. I think one of the other things that has caused us to stumble in the past is just the approach of how we involve our current teams in these types of discussions. And so Chris and I have sat down with our fire team to let them know we're having these conversations and why, and what the benefits could be to them. And so having their engagement and their involvement is going to be very, very important to hope for success for this. So I just wanted to mention that as well. So Mayor, I'll pause there.
Thank you, Philip. Trustees, comments? Heartache? No heartache? Go ahead, Dave.
I just want to say that I don't have any concerns. In fact, the opposite. I think that leveraging resources and sharing information, sharing responsibility is without a doubt the way to go. So I'm in absolute support.
Thank you, Dave. Libby, you had something?
Yeah, I'm in favor of staff pursuing this as well. Well, I'm wondering, is this something that would just involve Buena Vista and Chaffey County Fire? Or would it also include Salida or Pontius Springs?
So it's a great question, and I don't, I don't have a very definitive answer. I would say that I've had meetings with Chief Bass from Salida, and they have, they've had a kind of a paid department for, I think, over a hundred years now. And they've staffed up to the point where they have a sustainable model for the city of Salida. So my initial reaction to that is I don't think that they would necessarily join in the discussion early on. Doesn't mean that we would exclude them by any means. Pontius Springs is covered. They're in the taxing jurisdiction for Chaffey Fire. So they, in essence, would be part of this by default, because Chaffey Fire would be a participant or a member, if you will, of the Fire Authority with BV. So, but I don't, again, I don't see any direct impact on them right away either.
Any other trustees? Go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes, Cindy.
During our Safety Corps meetings, there was talk of why it couldn't be done. And I'm not against it. I'm all in favor of it. But it had something to do with how each one received money, the mill levies and something else. Is that, that can be worked out?
Absolutely. That's a great question, Cindy. And, you know, again, I think we've, there's been attempts at this, and it failed for various reasons, right? So I think we are going into this acknowledging that, but also seeing this as an opportunity, if done right. One of those aspects is the funding model. And with a fire authority, it does not mean that we go to the voters and ask for them to increase property taxes to become a part of Chaffey County. Actually, it takes our current sales tax model and allows us to decide what do we want to put into a fire authority for a new agency, if that makes sense. So really, I think it's leveraging what I think is a good funding model for the town. The only problem we have right now is we've kind of hit a ceiling, if you will, with how much of the pie we can carve out of our general fund for fire protection. And so I think the Fire Authority allows us the flexibility to use that current sales tax funding model for our portion of the Fire Authority.
Thank you.
Devin, did you have something?
Yeah, I support, I was just going to say that I support staff continuing this discussion. I think if we can find any way to better serve our community, then that's a win for everyone involved, so. Sounds good.
Thank you, Devin. It seems like, and it's obvious from the get-go, that it's a lot different than any of the other proposals that we've seen in the past. Many of them were, or let's say a couple of them, were just a complete takeover of BV Fire Department. And that kind of rubbed everybody raw in the beginning. Obviously, we've changed staff over. Our fire department has changed over. But I think it's a different approach, and I think that's what makes it sound so good. It just sounds better this way. Would you like that in the motion, Philip?
I'd love that. I'd agree.
If somebody be happy to make a motion to have staff pursue this program?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay.
Second, Nyberg, further discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Pae?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Bogey? Trustee Bogey? Trustee Bogey?
Sorry, I've been having, my internet's freezing. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, let's see. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Where am I here? Okay, so I think the last part of my update, yes, is just letting you know that we have a continuation of what our facility assessment project left us with. We're continuing on with utilizing a program out of CU Denver. It's a program that utilizes graduate students, and it's a capstone project for them. But if you remember, we talked quite a bit about the block around the community center and the police station. And we had very high-level concepts, to the point where the board liked the idea of moving the police station, or moving the police department out of its current location into a new facility that serves them better over by Public Works, and then allows the town to utilize that block around the community center for future town hall, some, possibly some more community center space, some more rec space, things like that. So Joel got us lined up with this program, and we met with the, with the team a few days ago. And there we go. There's the concept that came out of our facility assessment, just as a quick reminder. So there's a lot of aspects to that, that, hey, we need to dig down a little bit deeper, a little bit more detail about possibilities there and utilization of that space. So that's what they're going to work on, and I think with our input and kind of keeping it BV-focused and not necessarily what you would see somewhere else, I think they can bring forward a pretty good, pretty good report. And we're hoping to do that again in the next couple of months. So just a heads up on that, and it's a free, no-charge program for the town. So we're looking forward to seeing what they come up with. And finally, just to wrap up, I'm not going to go through any of this, actually, but in my report, as I typically do towards the end of the year, just kind of recapping at a high level how we did on our projects, whether that's operational projects or capital projects, and then just kind of looking at, gee, what did we not quite get to? And just a reminder of things that are either, we've already talked about going into the 2021 budget or that have been delayed for future years, things like that. So if I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Trustees, any questions or comments for Philip? Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? I just switched to my headset.
Yep.
Okay. I do want to just throw this out there. I do have some concerns with Town Hall being in that location as that master plan with regards to the development in the downtown core. Main Street has a finite amount of retail space, and we only have one Main Street. And that is essentially what encourages vibrancy. And we eventually need to find a way to connect East Main and South Main and encourage an overall walkability, a walkable downtown. Town Hall definitely needs a new space, and I like that it would remain in the downtown, perhaps one block from Main Street. Or, as a member of the committee had mentioned, possibly a second story with retail below. Or perhaps, the way Legacy Bank did it, a retail space in front. Since Town Hall is essentially office space, there's more flexibility. And I'd appreciate some sort of consideration being paid to that during the planning process, or at least before committing to a plan. Thank you.
Any other questions for Philip? I appreciate Philip. And I'll put it this way, the input that staff is having with the group from CU, because I know the last time we saw a plan that came down for free was quite an interesting plan. And I'm sure you remember that.
We, Joel and I, it was fresh on our minds, Mayor. We actually used that as an example of what's not successful, because, you know, with these, we're all very visual, right? And so if it doesn't look like it fits, that's what everybody remembers. Even if you say, this isn't really what we're proposing, it's just a placeholder. It doesn't matter. If it looks out of place, we won't get traction. So good, good point. And trustee Eckstein, just real quick. The concept of mixed use and having spaces that were available for retail and even residential definitely resonated, I think, in that assessment project. And so I guess just in general, that is, that is one thing we definitely talked about with this team is looking at and asking them from other places what's been successful from utilizing the spaces in those different ways instead of just an office space. So we'll see, we'll see where it goes.
Okay, thank you, Philip. Next is Town Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. My report is on page forty of the packet. And right there is, at the very top is my shameless plug for the ClearGov transparency website. As we get it more populated and things are really falling together now, there will be more and more information on that website. And I intend to publish the budget book on that website, because they have a wonderful utility to help me get that all together. So stay tuned and keep looking. Regarding the 2020 audit in 2021, I sent out an RFP, and it was fairly targeted. What I did is I went to the COSIPA website, which is Colorado Society of CPAs. And I pulled off of their directory auditors that specialize in municipal auditing in Colorado. And I targeted those RFPs. I sent out, I believe, fifteen. And out of all of those, I got three responses saying that they weren't taking on any new clients, and the rest was nothing. And I was thinking about it this last week, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't roll it back and then cast my net wider, because we were in the throes of budget. And so I expect that that's probably my fault. But nonetheless, I just sent an email to Lyman Hamblin, who has been our auditor, and asked him what he thought. And he said that he had several clients that were supposed to. And he said that he had several clients that were supposed to, that were supposed to rotate out last year in 2020, and they also had no response, none, on their RFPs. And those people, they ended up putting on extension and fitting them in wherever they could. And I said, no, no, I, I can't do an extension. I'll be in big trouble if I do an extension. And he said he would be more than happy to do our audit again this year for 2020, considering the issues with COVID and other, and there were a lot of firms that just weren't doing fieldwork. And so apparently, there's been a lot of extensions, not just with his clients, but a lot of P, a lot of firms just aren't, just weren't doing fieldwork during the pandemic. And so rather than try and hop around and squeeze another RFP in right now, I asked him if he would perform our audit, and we have it scheduled with him the week of March 8th. And then I will send, send out my RFP again and cast my net a little wider, I suppose, in September and try and nail this rotation out in that way. But we still have to have an audit. State auditor doesn't care, and I don't want to do an audit late. So this is, this is what I, I put together. So if anyone has any concerns, I'd be more than happy to chat with you about it, answer any questions. And then since, since I'm going to be taking up a majority of the rest of the meeting, I just finished up with the town expenditures and the large expenditures on my memo. And I'll be entertaining you all with a delightful budget discussion later on in the meeting.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for Michelle right now? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next is Rec Director Earl.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and happy holidays, everyone. We've been staying pretty busy at the Rec Department here, primarily updating our policies and procedures to match current requests from Chaffey County Public Health. We have changed in our guidelines directed from the state from yellow, which we've been operating under all summer, to orange levels. And I'll talk about that throughout the report and how it's affected us. Aside from that, we've been working on refining our job descriptions and getting prepared for 2021. We're excited for next year to happen soon. I'm going to start off with a little bit of not-so-good news, but we have a way out of it is the, the grant that we applied for through GOCO, the Resilient Communities Grant, to help support our multi-generational facility. We did not get the funding we had requested. It was super competitive, and we had some really good feedback from GOCO. We are very close once again. But we are going to take another approach. There is another opportunity because they did things differently this year. Instead of one big funding cycle for the year, they have four different funding cycles. So we're going to go back with a refined and updated application, an RFP, in the month of February. We'll talk in more detail about that. A memo under Business Item A. So as I noted earlier, Chaffey County, we have shifted from yellow to orange. I appreciate everyone that spends time on the countywide calls, and especially Phil and Duff for helping lead the messages of our town. But as we go into orange, how it affects Rec is we are limited to outdoor groups of 10 or less or virtual programming. So it makes it really hard for us to have our traditional volleyball programs for adults and kids and our pickleball programs. So those are all on hold right now until we get different guidance from the county, from the state. So working on a lot of improvement projects around the town. You may have seen the new signs, the trail signs at the Ramsour Bridge. Those are really nice to see up and finished. I've been sitting on the Envision Chaffey County Rec and Balance Board. Libby helps out with that, so does Lois Walton. And it's been extremely informative. We're working on a master plan for Rec to guide our county into the next 10 to 15 years. As I wrote in my report, just for all of us to know, I mean, you know, we had a busy summer. We have about 4 million visitors a year to Chaffey County for recreation, and they expect that to double to 8 million visitors by 2026. Why am I mentioning that? Yes, Rec programs will grow, but also our parks will be busier, our streets will be busier, our trails will be busier, our stores will be busier, and so on and so on. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows we're popular, and we're doing a good job, so people want to be here. So we're ready to steer our county into the future there. Having some really good meetings for future planning with the Surf Hotel to help stay on top of all the happenings in South Main as we get into spring and summertime. And again, staying in great communication with the Chamber. Melissa's doing a very fine job. I was able to meet their new board and attend their board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Hear their directions really reassuring, because we do a lot of stuff collaboratively with the Chamber of Commerce. Other highlights, you may have heard about the Chaffey Has Heart Initiative. We're doing our part to help spread the word on that. It's a really cool reminder. We've all been asked forever and ever to wash our hands, wear face covering, stay distant, stay home if you're sick, get tested if you're really sick. But the Chaffey Has Heart Initiative is a new twist. So you log on to their website, you take a, about a 30-second little pledge that you will do those things, but then in exchange, you get about $800 in savings at great restaurants and eateries and bars and retailers around the county. So every time I go in and I get a two-for-one or a half off of this, it reminds me to do the right thing, of course, so we can keep our county healthy, keep our schools open, and in essence, keep us recreating. Very productive meetings with our advisory boards. They're doing a great job bringing information from the street level to us. For facilities, how has orange affected us? Not much, because under the yellow guidance, we were already taking pretty conservative precautions. We were way under the 25% capacity already. So we are continuing with our 10-person capacity in the Aspen and 20 in the Pinion. What we are not doing is taking new reservations for the month of December. We're going to get back to those inquiries in early January to see how we're doing as a county after the holiday season. Let's see, for events, again, our event organizers are doing a great job at self-regulating and adapting their offerings to the community, making sure that they're safe and sound for everyone. We got through Christmas opening without the tradition of the big Holiday of Lights Parade. That was kind of a bummer not to see, but they opted not to do that. They did have the pictures with Santa. Now, if you noticed, they stealthily, and Mankew Pollock's, I know you were a big part of this, set up a beautiful Christmas tree at the Splash Park and got it all lit up. But we didn't have a big gathering around it just to not promote to a lot of people hanging out in one spot. But our town looks beautiful, and thanks for everyone that's helped with that. There are some people already making cancellations to traditional events in the summertime. So we got reports from the Mountain Mania Car Show and Pancakes in the Park. They're opting not to do their events. But most people are still planning on hosting a special event in BV in the summer of 2021. And then under programming, like I stated earlier, all summer, we were operating under yellow, which allowed us to have groups of 25 indoors, which gave us a lot of options for basketball and volleyball and pickleball, et cetera. But now that we're in the orange level, we're very, very limited. It's hard, but you know, this is what we live in these days, is we plan and prepare and present, but then are informed that things are changing. So then we react, plan, prepare, and get ready for the next opportunity. So we try to stay in great communication with all of our participants and guests in town, and it's been good, getting a lot of good feedback. They understand. And we just hope to get into springtime with some vaccines and get back to some sort of normalcy. I will stop there because I get to talk to you more and a couple more agenda items down the road. Thanks.
Thank you, Earl. Does anybody have any questions for Earl or any comments?
Hey, Earl, I'm wondering...
Go ahead, Amy.
You know, I knew you're working within Envision, but I was going to comment that maybe they can help us clean up Elephant Rock, that campground. I don't know who's, kind of who would be responsible or who could help that or maybe organize a community cleanup, but it looks like it's in pretty rough shape.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can act with the community cleanup, but that is high on the radar, is taking super-popular, easily-accessible campsites and giving them structure, assisting with additional restrooms, pit toilets, but also informative, you know, signs, because a lot of these people are new, first-time recreators. Then also, the big thing that's really going to help is assistance with funding for a ranger of sort that can drive around four-mile and help educate people about what they're doing right and what they need to be doing better.
Thanks, Earl.
Yeah, but stay tuned for more community stuff, because that's one thing we can do during a pandemic is spread out and do some, some really good stewardship projects. So we'll get those going.
Okay, any other questions for Earl? Thank you, Earl. We'll hear from you later. Next is Sean, Public Works.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everyone. Good to see you all tonight. So little different report into the year. I know we have a lot to go over tonight, so let's kind of look this over together and kind of maybe make this kind of an icebreaker for some 2020 reports that, that'll follow this. But what this is, is just kind of a breakdown in water, and this is, this report's just all, all water. And just to talk about a few different aspects of it. So developments and production, demand and operations and water projects, just things like that. So take you to the first table there. That's the 2020 Growth and Development Table there. And on the far left is a list of developments. Also, a line item in there showing the miscellaneous infill, which I'm just calling remaining town, old-town taps throughout, throughout town, not really associated to a development or developing area. So, but anyways, I think you're all kind of getting a taste of what all of this means, single-family equivalencies, SFPs, things like that. So I'll spend a little bit of time on this table just to kind of talk about 2020. So we had 20, in 2020, we had 66 water connections, slightly lower than what we had last year and the year before, probably, you know, 2020. Probably had a little bit to do with that. But also with this, wanted to be able to show the active connections that we have in town right now. So that's 1752, and the remaining obligated taps that we have in the far-right column, that 1267. Joel kind of shared some of this information with you guys at the last trustee meeting. So real similar to what that report had, he had in that report. Wanted to share with you a list of future speculative impending developments that will have water impacts or may have water impacts. Now, these are not, I mean, set in stone. So, but these are things or, or, or projects that we're either talking to or talking about or calling us. So pretty good list there. Some of them are, are pretty common that we all are aware of. And there's a few more, a few more that might be kind of sneaking in that you might not have seen until now. Going to keep moving pretty quick through this. 2020 monthly water production and build consumption. This is the one that I really, not really excited to ever share with anybody, but I broke it down by months, and then I brought a total in on the, on the very bottom. So that second column shows our master meter production. So that's the, that's the first meter our water hits as it comes into town. So nothing else really matters after that. So that's a metered number of water that we're producing to, to fill our storage tanks and send to our customers. And then the next column is the build consumption, and you see that discrepancy there. So that's that monthly report. I give you guys a lot where you see that unaccounted is kind of dense, and sometimes like in December, 30%, 20%, 19%, you know, and so on. That last column, I wanted to kind of give a reference of what was happening in that month. So I kind of brought to light the event that happened that we, that we were aware of, or anyways, that seemed to coincide with the water loss, because we dug a hole in the street and we fixed a water break. So those are events that actually happened. Those are the times that they happened, and that's kind of a good indicator why that unaccounted was high. There's a few other factors that, that fall into the unaccounted discrepancy between what we bill and what we produce. Some of it's flushing, some of it's metering, you know, some of it's just water that's maybe just, just escaping the ability to be recorded possibly by a wrong-sized meter or, or in most cases, it's, it's a leak in the ground. So we'll see what that comes out to. But, you know, factoring in, you know, the water loss that we see, we're likely to have an unaccounted water loss around 18%. It's a little better than last year, but it's still not where we want to be. We'll see what that comes back at, and obviously, we're still looking to improve that unaccounted difference with our staff. Yeah, little list of the, short list of the breaks that we had this year in 2020. And just, just thought I'd put it in here just to show, you know, our water rights and water purchases. So kind of our portfolio that we have. Again, I think if you recall, Joel's report had, had that as well, and I think most of us have seen that. So, and then, and then a production associated to our portfolio. So what the gallery water produced, what the well, well-two produced, and what well-three usage was. And, yeah, just, just so, if you have any questions on well-three, we, we didn't produce any, any treated water this year, but we did do almost six main gallons in, in irrigation water. So that's the River Park and South Main, Streetscape, High School Baseball Field, Soccer Field, those, those areas right there. I dropped in a pretty, pretty good breakdown of Ivy League's water loss as well. It's pretty explanatory. It's, it's real similar to the table for the 2020 Town Water Production Report. Little, share a little bit of information on how we're able to get that. So as the, the town's treated water travels to the Ivy League subdivision, there's a kind of a sub-meter, we'll call it, that captures the water that comes into their, their services. And that's how we're able to capture that Ivy League master meter number. And again, back to the build numbers. So, excuse me, pretty excessive losses. And, you know, and that report kind of talks about some of the things that Ivy League has done and some of the things that we look to do, and maybe possibly working out some, you know, connecting with Ivy League and, and being able to maybe provide some of our resources or our insight or our talented staff that we have, possibly being able to maybe assist them with some of that. But all, and all that unaccounted water is, is really excessive, and we're really going to have to be figuring out what to do with that. I dropped in the, the growth trend chart. just to kind of have a refresher. It's been a while since we looked at it. We brought this to you guys a couple of years ago, and not much has changed, although the trend did slow down a little bit. We'll see what the SFEs are. I, I feel like the SFE development is still going to be pretty accurate number that this chart shows. And yeah, water projects for 2021. I think we all know what we're doing. We do have a couple on here that you might not have seen. So Water Resource Master Plan and the Crosman's Edition Water Model, we're able to work with our engineering budget this year to, to do the Crosman's Edition Water Model, the Water Resource Master Plan. We, we have that in the proposed budget for 2021. And yeah, yeah, just in, and outside of our, our city limits, we, we do have that Source Water Protection District. And in 2020, we had six applications and approvals for onsite wastewater treatment systems in that Source Water Protection area. So anyways, yeah, sorry to drop this on you in December. I will have a pretty in-depth report, a good in-depth report coming to you in, in January for, for all of our departments. But I just kind of thought this would be something to get your eyes on. And because we're going to be talking a lot about water next year. So but yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. And sorry, I went through it so quick.
I tried. Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Sean? I don't see anybody screaming, Sean, so I think you did good. Next, we have Jack, the airport.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Wish everybody happy holidays as they're coming up. For our report, staffing wise, all the team is back after Thanksgiving, all healthy, doing well. I know we've gone into orange, but we've kind of been leaning that way a couple of weeks prior to that anyway, with myself and Chandra, the two full-time people a week and a half working from home, trying to keep as much distance as we can. Operations wise, we're doing all right, normal for this time of year. Things are quiet down. Perhaps as we get closer to Christmas or ski season, we might see a bit of a pickup, but basically pretty quiet. All our summer testing is completed. We're finalizing sending out the invoices for the Army testing and Augusta that was here. We just got a word from Boeing again. They had said they were coming in the new year. We got new dates. It looks like seven January to 12 February. Boeing will be here with the Apache helicopter. So that's good news to start the new season off. Hopefully it does work out that way. We did finalize our capital improvement and airport improvement plan with FAA and the CDOT. It's been uploaded into their software. A lot of that is, will be reflected in our budget in the, in capital improvement plan within the ClearGov. Couple of things that come up on us unexpectedly, well, semi unexpectedly, the last snowstorm really highlighted the problem with the exterior of our building stacko. So we're going to have to get that repaired. And it might be a little bit on the pricey side. We're looking at getting quotes, but we're at that point that it's literally starting to peel off our building and cause interior leakings. But we, we got people looking at it now. Operation wise, we seem to have a little more operation in aircraft and operations total and personnel using the airport this time than we did last year. And that's a lot of it is attributed to the small aircraft, the little piston aircrafts. I think it just because of the covert and pandemic, people just getting out of the big city, flying their private airplanes, coming up and visit us. I think it was Earl said, the stats, the town activities are growing. I think that's going to happen throughout the year with us too. Smaller aircraft might see a resurgence here as people have discovered the town and discovered this airport, which is a good thing. We're kind of betting on that, that this trend will continue in 2021 with the smaller aircraft. And if you look down at fuel sales, it definitely reflects that with the, what we call the hundred low lead. These are the smaller ones. We sold more of that fuel than we did last year. Obviously, we're lagging behind in jet A because the big air traffic was limited as well as our testing was shorter season. Not other than that, I don't have much else report. As Philip said, on the next meeting on the 12th, Shonda and I will present our year end report. And I have some, you know, flash of pictures, a little bit of the statistics, and also a little bit what goes on behind the scenes of the airport. So the, especially the newer people on the board can understand some of the things that we have to do to keep the airport going and to keep in compliance with the FAA and, you know, and trying to appease the public as well. Other than that, if you don't have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Jack? Go ahead, Libby.
Jack, it seems like in your report, you said that Augusta hadn't yet paid for their 2019 bill.
That's correct. We are coordinating. Yeah, we're having a hard time getting, trying to track down who's who in the zoo in that part and who has the authority to release the funding. I see that Jeff is on. We might have to start talking to Jeff about this. We're giving the Augusta from 2019, we're looking at roughly $150,000.
Yeah, it'd be worth pursuing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Libby. Anybody else have any questions for Jack? Thank you, Jack. We look forward to hearing from you in a month or so.
Right.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Next is business items. First item on business item is the GOCO Resilient Communities Grant Application. Looks like Earl is taking this one.
Yes, I'm back on. So as I reported in my December report, we were not granted the fundings we were requesting from GOCO, but set up differently this year. Again, there's four different opportunities to ask for assistance for projects. So we applied for the third quarter opportunity. We're not granted. And just to kind of pause there and talk about some feedback we got. We were able to sit down with our advisor over Zoom through GOCO, myself and Ben and a couple of other folks to get some feedback about our application. And an extremely competitive year with not a lot of funds. They were really focusing on conservation efforts, trails, trailheads. We had a big part of our application was that, but we also had our pickleball courts in there. They did not fund any projects that had major infrastructure improvements like courts or gyms or fields in this session. GOCO did say that they will bring back those types of opportunities in June or July of 2021 and the more traditional grant opportunities. But in essence, the reason why I wanted to speak to the board is to just get your blessing. A couple of months ago, we had asked the board to put $20,000 from the Conservation Trust Fund into our 2021 draft budget to help with our contributions for this grant. In a traditional year, we wouldn't have found out for months, 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 but we found out early because they do it in the quarter system now. So we are requesting that the town keeps the $20,000 from the Conservation Trust Fund in the budget, because we are going to go back to GOCO and reapply in February of 2021. So no budget impact, just keeping the money in there comes the sources coming from the Conservation Trust Fund, which is for trails, open space and parks. Again, after our meeting with Chris at GOCO and after meeting with Peak to Peak and the Trails Advisory Board and our team, I have a follow-up meeting with Philip on Thursday. I think we'll have a really good approach to a really good project to help us accomplish some of our capital improvement project goals for 2021. So I will leave it at that. People have any questions? But again, request is for the Board of Trustees to keep the $20,000 in the 2021 draft budget.
Okay, thank you, Earl. Did they, do they give you a feel of what will be accepted in this next round? I mean, in other words, will they be looking at courts and that kind of stuff, infrastructure or not again? Do they, do they say?
They did say, so not in this grant type. So this grant type, they really want to focus on, again, trails, conservation, trailheads. So what we're going to be looking at is, you know, there's two highly sought after projects from the Trails Advisory Board, which is the Walton Loop, which is roughly a $70,000 ADA accessible improvements to a loop around our disc golf course. But we also, with clarity in our application, it becomes a trailhead. So it's a starting point. So they really wanted to fund projects that not only provided more trail mileage, but more trail starting points. So instead of everyone starting at the Whipple Bridge for their adventure on the public land side of the Whipple Bridge, they could start right at the new Lewis Walton Loop, which would be at the tennis courts. And then they loop around and then get right onto the bridge. So you're starting and finishing from a different area. So creating a new trailhead.
Okay, thank you, Earl. Any other questions or, go ahead, Libby.
Earl, does this project still have the bathrooms in it? Do they qualify as being trailhead bathrooms now?
Yes, they would love to see trailhead bathrooms. Yes. So that's a big part of COVID is sanitation, hand washing, running water, stuff for people to stay healthy with their just bathroom needs instead of chemical toilets.
Yeah, I was wondering whether, whether the grant committee really understood how many people use the, you know, the Whipple Trails and, and how that bathroom really is important, the new bathroom.
Yeah. So unfortunately, during the review process, they were in theory supposed to reach out to us for clarity or any questions. And that did not happen. We had reached out to them several times with emails and phone messages. But I think now we have a good source for solid communication with GOCO. We're able to speak to this advisor that gave us some really good input. And we just have to be ultra, ultra clear. And they do want to and have said that they'll, they'll be better about communicating with us if they have questions.
I'd be all in favor of the 20,000 and getting, getting the whole grant resubmitted.
Obviously, Earl, I, I think what we want to hear, Libby, if you would like to, or somebody else would, let's put that in a motion to go ahead. If you wish to leave that funding in the budget.
Okay, I'll make that motion to leave the $20,000 from the Conservation Trust Fund to the Recreation Department for purposes of this grant.
Okay, I have a motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Norm. Further discussion?
One question for Earl. Is the redoing of the, the wood on the, the Whipple Bridge, is that going to be, is that going to remain as part of this project?
No, so that for clarity is a separate grant we have applied for through CPW, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, their non-motorized trail grant. We will find out in mid-December, which is coming up very soon, if we've made it to the second level, which includes typically or historically in-person Q and A and interviews, but we will be doing it virtually. So that will fund the replacement decking of the Whipple Bridge and the rail portions, and then the first 1,500 linear feet of rehab for the Whipple Trail. But that's a separate grant.
I do recall that now. Thank you. Yeah, I, I'd never really considered the, the tread on there. But after that discussion, now every time I ride or run or walk or whatever across there, I, I recognize just how badly that stuff needs to be replaced. So thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Would we like to go ahead with a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Switzer?
Yes.
And Trustee Bobby?
Yes.
Thank you. We will get back to work on it. You know, it's hard to not win something that you worked so hard on, but we sure did learn a lot along the way and made some really good connections with some really good people in our community for the overall good of Buena Vista. So we're going to go for it again. I think we're going to make it this time. Fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
Mayor, may I please excuse myself from the remainder of the meeting?
Okay, is there any other, any comments or questions for Amy? Anything you'd like to bring up, Amy?
Nope. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Let the record show, trustee Eckstein has left the meeting. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. This is a public hearing on the 2021 budget. The board will hold a hearing on the 21 proposed budget to discuss budget requests. We'll start off with staff. So Michelle, would you like to start off, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and trustees. This memo is on page 54 of the packet. We put in a lot of work and so have you guys, so has the board, so is the staff. And here we find ourselves on December 8th looking at this budget. So the things that we discussed during the last meeting, I wanted to just remind you that we changed the salary and benefits for Al Smith to outside professional services and split that up between the Public Works and the Water Fund. And we corrected the Highway 24 sidewalk project and the Highway 24 and Baylor intersection. We, those are two separate projects and we didn't have one in there. And we had the grant wrong. So the comments and stuff in ClearGov on the budget has been very, very helpful in finding these small items that end up being big items, but there, it's easy to see why those two items got combined. And then we updated the fire station renovation as well as the All Hazard Response Fund. So what has been changed is one and two are kind of together. We, we calculated the 2020 net income so that we could come to a beginning balance for the new All Hazard Response Fund. And when we did that, we calculated $222,000 would be the 2021 beginning balance for the All Hazard Response Fund. And since those line items resided in the general fund, we took that out of the general fund balance and put that in the beginning fund balance for the new, new fund. Now, this is what we previously had calculated as a 2020 net profit from the incident response. From the Incident Response Department. However, those those figures have changed. Shauna has made some corrections. And the expenses and we also have some additional. Deployments that are are settling out so that we can get those expenses. And income into the budget before it's published. So ultimately, all of all that does is affect the beginning balance of the All-Hazard Response Fund. But it's important to note that because it does decrease the general fund balance by whatever we put in to start with. And then we adjusted the Public Safety Building renovation to 160. And then we further adjusted it down to 130. Per the Fire Department's recommendations. And they are also transferring additional 30,000 into the general fund to pay for the. Help pay for the startup of the Reserve Firefighter Program. All of that was was inserted, corrected, or. Adjusted in ClearGov. And so. On page 75 of the packet. Is the 2021 projected fund balance. And. What I did. Is since we have the All-Hazard Response Fund. Now taking now its own fund, it I used that column that we had reserved for fire trucks. And I reserved it for Advisory Fund and Boards. Fund raised funds, which is it's a pretty substantial fund, but it's like Trails Board and beautification and planning and. The ice rink and. All those several of the boards have come to me wanting. Wanting town to hold on to their fundraised funds so they didn't have to go. Open a checking account or hold all kinds of cash or try and figure out who is going to be responsible and assign her on a checking account. Instead, we just have a dedicated account on the balance sheet. For for each of these funds and each of these. Advisory Boards or Commissions. And I had outlined those up in my memo if you wanted to refer to them and again. These are all just balance sheet accounts, but ultimately they affect. The fund balance and they're not really available for the unrestricted fund balance because. They belong to Advisory Boards or Commissions or whatever. The 222 is out of the General Fund. Projected 2021 fund balance and so that leaves 770,000. And the General Fund that we're projecting for end of 2021. Then the Capital Fund, we Capital Improvement Fund, we try and and balance down to zero. Because that's all transfers. And then the Conservation Trust Fund, we show the $38,000. Transfer into the general fund, into the Capital Improvement Fund. Yeah, there it is. And then. The, that must be the Street Fund. We show a $5,000. Transfer in to the Street Fund from the Stormwater Fund. Because that is. For the project for the Town Hall and we decided that we needed to split that between the two funds. That's the sidewalk and they're going to fix the sidewalk and the drainage. Around Town Hall. Then the Marijuana Special Tax Fund. We had in about language. First year revenue of 125, so that's what I populated that with. We'll see how that comes out. The All-Hazard Response Fund, again, that beginning balance came out of the General Fund because that was their money. Airport Water and Stormwater Fund are. Are typical, the enterprise funds you're pretty familiar with, so. That is. That is the. First part of the budget before I ask you to pass the resolutions. Now forgive me, I did put the breakout, the spreadsheets. The spreadsheet for the budget in. Attached to both memos, so I know I increased it, but I wanted it to be. Attached to each memo, so it was easy to find if you wanted to refer back to it. Philip, did you have anything to offer?
Great, great overview, Michelle. I'm trying to just navigate, sorry. No, I don't have anything to add at this time.
And so that would put us down to the memo for the budget adoption, which. Somewhere before page 79. There you go. I'll entertain any questions?
Any questions for Michelle? Go ahead, Libby.
Michelle. Before making these most recent adjustments, we were talking about whether there was a small deficit or a small surplus in the General Fund. And now I've lost track of how to see that.
That is. Hang on and I'll be able to. To direct Philip to that a little easier. That is going to be on page. 67 of the packet. Now, it's going to be on 66 of the packet. And it's showing a $1,000 net increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions, clarifying questions for Michelle or staff at this time? Okay, thank you. As this is a public hearing, I opened this. Portion of the meeting to public hearing. We would entertain any questions from the public. I am not seeing. Any hands raised or anybody asking for questions? Thank you. I close this portion of public comment. Are there any other clarifying questions for staff? Okay, trustees, I close this portion of the meeting for that. In discussion now. Amongst the trustees, you have any questions or comments you would like to raise amongst each other? We can always ask for more comments from staff. So we can see the adjustments. Are there any questions on the adjustments besides what Libby was talking about? And you can see Tabor Reserves, everything that's in there that restricted balances.
What's on page 75?
Okay, hearing none. I close this portion, close this portion of the meeting for public comment. Next item on the agenda is item C. Should the Board of Trustees approve adoption of Resolution Number 69, Series 2020, entitled, "A Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, Adopting the Town of Buena Vista 2021 Fee Schedule."
Sorry, I'm getting there. Apologies.
You're all right.
So the fee schedule is going to be.
I've got page 81.
Okay, that's. Draft fee schedule, there we go. Got it. Sorry about that.
You're all right.
All right. So. As you remember, we we did a preview of the fee schedule at the previous meeting. It's going to go through some of the key changes and to summarize, we are looking at water, water rate changes. Both on the system development and the monthly water rates. Nothing changed since our last discussion, but we can definitely take a look closer look at that if you have any questions. We had some planning fee changes to mainly go away from deposit style. To to a flat fee structure for planning. And again, we can, we can take a look at some of that if you have any questions. And then we. We looked at, or we started to discuss. What's involved with the retail marijuana licensing and applications? And that's, that's the primary change from meeting to meeting because Paula and team had a chance to. With input from Chief Morgan and myself and some others, we were able to establish what those. What those fees should be. So I think that's the main change from meeting to meeting unless staff I. I'm forgetting something. I think that's the main thing. So let's see if I can find that here. It'll be a lot of red. I know that.
It's on page 88, Philip.
There we go. Thank you. So here you you will see the proposed fees that are tied to the application process and just as a reminder, in case someone hasn't. Seen the ordinance or the process, we have a two-phase application process for this. So the phase one application. Being $750. And the phase two application being $2,000. And you will see that that we've tried to cover what we anticipate. Again, we're learning from, learning this process as we go. Paula's department did a lot of research into other municipalities and their process and so we feel like we've captured. The fees that we're aware of for now in terms of renewals and change of location, change of ownership, things like that. So Paula, do you have anything you want to highlight or any?
I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, thank you.
What, Philip, what would the late fee be involved? What, how would that come into play?
That would come into play their licenses and annual license. So if they did not renew it in time, then there would be a fee charged. The state would charge a fee as well as municipality.
Okay, so would you? You're doing that in lieu of just canceling the application. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Is that? Okay, okay. I was just trying to grasp that. It it makes sense. I mean, obviously, we want to be. Fair, but also, hey, you've got to come in when you're supposed to come in. Any other questions on the fees? Go ahead, Libby.
Does the new license application of $2,000, does that come after the phase one application fee and the phase two application fee?
On the new license application fee of $2,000, that would be where Ascend is going to fall into that category. And our second license, they'll go through the phase one application of the $750 and then the phase two application is $2,000. And that is actually the same thing as a new license application. So they. Phase two application fee and the new license fee is one of the same, so that second store would be paying a phase two application fee. In lieu of the new license application. If that makes sense, because going forward, we're not sure, let's say Ascend goes out of business. You know, at that time, we'll determine what the process is, if it's going to be a phase one, phase two, but. We broke it down in the new license application fee to address Ascend and then phase two application fee to address the second store. So that phase two is actually the application process for the second business.
Okay.
Thank you, Paula. Any other clarifying questions, trustees?
Is the renewal application of 1,500, is that an annual fee?
Yes.
Any other questions? On the total draft budget, or excuse me, the draft fee schedule. Hearing none. If they, if nobody has any questions or comments or amendments. I would entertain a motion to approve or deny or approve with amendments, Resolution Number 69. Thank you, Norm.
Second.
Second Fay. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Switzer?
Yes.
And Trustee Poby?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is, "Should the Board of Trustees Approve Adoption of Resolution Number 70, Series 2020, Entitled, 'A Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, Summarizing Expenditures and Revenues for Each Fund and Adopting a Budget for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, For the Calendar Year Beginning on the First Day of January 2021 and Ending on the Last Day of December 2021." Any further comments you have on that, Philip? Michelle?
None that I can think of. I think we pretty much beat it to death.
I don't know. It's, it's a living document, Michelle.
Yes.
Any questions, trustees? Anything that you question? I will speak up on behalf of. Trustee Eckstein and you know, if we, if we look at the. Possibility of adding more revenue to the Fire Department for the up, the maintenance or the completion of the renovation. We can always amend budget at that point in time. So that's not something that we would have to do tonight anyway. So I just want to make that point clear. We can always jump in, especially after see what the finals numbers are for 2020. You know, there's just things we can do. I just wanted to make that comment. If there are no additions, deletions, or changes. I would.
If I may.
Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
We did change the transfer from the All-Hazards Response Fund from. 190 to 160. 130,000 of that going into the General Fund and 30,000 going into the General Fund. And the remainder, 130, going into the Capital Improvement Fund, so. If you could have the, if you could have the motion be to approve as corrected.
Okay. That would be the motion and I thank you, Michelle. I I forgot that that was not in the original document. So we would go approve as amended. Or deny as amended.
You guys are making me have a heart attack here.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 70 as amended.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Norm. We have second. Further discussion? Jeff, does that sound all right?
That's, that's all right.
Good. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Poby?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item is item E, should the board of trustees approve adoption of resolution number seventy-one, series twenty twenty. Entitled, a resolution of the board of trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. Appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purposes as set forth below. For the town of Buena Vista, Colorado for the twenty twenty-one budget year. Again, same questions. Are there any clarifying questions you have for Michelle? Anything that does not make sense? Now, Michelle, will this one have to be amended also?
Yes, because right there, you see.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve number seventy-one as amended.
Thank you, Norm.
Oh, second.
Second row. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Poby?
Yes.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item F. Should the board of trustees approve adoption of resolution number seventy-two, series twenty twenty. Entitled, a resolution of the board of trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. Leaving general property taxes for the year twenty twenty to help defray the cost of government for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado for the twenty twenty-one budget year. Do you want to give a little clarification on that, Michelle?
Yeah, so, um, Phillip. I think the mill levy, um, calculation is actually on page one fifteen. And that one's on page one twenty-one to go back to it, but the calculation, um.
Sorry, Michelle, what page did you say?
One fifteen.
One fifteen, okay.
Sorry, these are so scrambled, guys. Um. Anyways, uh, we calculate based on what the. What the county treasurer presents as the assessed and the actual value of all the property. In our jurisdiction as well, uh, one fifteen. As well as the assessed, the assessed and actual in Buena Vista. It's interesting because the actual, um. The actual value went up by twenty-one million dollars this year. And so we're increasing by that and, um. And the, that doesn't take into account the Sangre de Cristo. However, Sangre de Cristo will not be taken into account until next year because. Property taxes are, um, calculated. Uh, in arrears and so if you could. So the, the budget fiscal year for twenty twenty-one. Is for property tax values as of twenty twenty. And any new annexations do not, um, hit our books until. The January first of the year following the annexation. So, um. We did have a few adjustments in our final. Letter from the Chaffey County, but, uh, four sixty-four. Five sixty-one is what we are levying and that's a little more than six mils. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Michelle on how that works out?
Is there a comparison with what it was in two thousand nineteen, or two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty?
In twenty twenty, we had four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars assessed and it was seven mils. So. The mils are always divided by the assessed value that they give you. And so it kind of up and down, um, you end up dividing. The amount. That you calculate on the Tabor calculation divided by the assessed value comes up with that six point three four seven. Subtotal for the general operating, the mills. And then you bring that down and there was a small abatement. And so I calculated that in and we end up with three, six point three five six mils.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? Okay, I would entertain a motion. To approve or deny resolution number seventy-two or approve as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
That one actually doesn't have to be amended.
Correct.
Okay, approve resolution seventy-two as written.
Thank you. Second Nyberg. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Poby?
Yes.
Thank you all very much and thank you, Michelle, Phillip, trustees. It was a good job.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the three mile plan. Should the board of trustees approve resolution number seventy-three, series twenty twenty entitled, a resolution of the board of trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. Adopting an updated three mile plan. Principal player. Thank you, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Um, what we have before you tonight is, um. The three mile plan and it starts on page one twenty-four of your packet. Or one twenty-two, excuse me. Um. It is basically a document that is required by state law. The state law basically has in place three requirements. One. You can annex land farther than three miles from the town's borders in any one calendar year. Two, if you're gonna annex, you have to have a plan in place for public improvements. And general land use characteristics. And then three, it, uh, requires that you, and you update it on an annual basis. At a minimum, so you can, you can update it ten, ten times a year if you want, but you have to do it at least once. So the three mile plan is basically guidance for any annexations that the town may pursue in the next year. And so we have included in that packet on page one twenty-six. Um, several maps, um, starting on page one twenty-six is our three mile area map. And that basically just describes generally what the, um, the lands look like and where. The three mile limit is within town limits. That's that bold black line that circles the town. Um, there's a couple different shade patterns on here. The town is shown in blue. Uh, BLM land is shown in that light green and Forest Service land is shown in the dark green. So kind of give you an idea of what we have within three miles of the town's limits. Then the next map on the following page is the areas of desired growth. This is a map that we took to the planning commission and had them review. We did make some slight changes from twenty nineteen for this map. We removed a couple of areas out of the areas of desired growth. Um, around Ice Lake, uh, Teal Run area is, um, predominantly developed as residential. We didn't feel that that was necessarily an area that we would desire to grow. Because it is already platted with predominantly residential uses. So we removed that area from the twenty nineteen plan into the twenty twenty. Additionally, we removed some areas west of County Road three sixty-one and three oh six. Um, so that's areas that would be above the elevation of our water tank out, out there on, uh, County Road three oh six. We removed that area, um, just to the west of County Road three sixty-one that was in twenty nineteen. And then lastly, we removed some properties that are south of the airport. There is a couple of properties south of three twenty, which is the south end of the airport itself. And we removed the property that is immediately east of, uh, highway twenty-four and two eighty-five. That is actually property that is, has a conservation easement. So. There is not necessarily a need to be annexing that. So we did remove those and make those changes from the twenty nineteen plan to the twenty twenty plan. The areas are broken down by kind of common characteristics and those are all in the report. Um, basically, none of the ten areas, um, themselves, we changed in terms of projected uses or. Public improvements such as airports or subways or bridges or those kind of things. Um, the next page is, um. The, uh. The municipal services area map and basically this is areas that are outside of town that we think we have a. Um, better chance of providing water service in particular, but also comes along with. Uh, police protection, fire protection, um, more readily than, and then those areas that are within the areas of desired growth. And providing those services sooner than later. So any of these areas that are shown in green are areas that. We think have a better chance of providing, uh, water infrastructure to support any developments should we annex those. So they're closer to our water lines, therefore there's less cost to run those and, um, are more readily, uh. To be annexed if those property owners seek to annex into town. And, um, then lastly, I have the, uh, transportation plan. This is the map from two thousand and four. For our transportation master plan, which is getting a little dated. Uh, but this is just for reference so that the board can see kind of where we want to have future roads. Which is kind of important when you get to annexing because. We, if we annex those areas, those will be things that we're looking for when they annex. And with that, I open up to any questions that you may have and, um, answer, answer or clarify anything that the board wishes to talk about.
Muted. Okay, I'm not muted now. Uh, any questions that you have for Mark or clarifying questions?
I liked the explanations that he gave on why they added and removed. It helped a lot and. You know, a lot of thought went into this. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Cindy. Any other questions or comments for Mark? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Cindy.
Second.
Second Fay. Further discussion? Paula, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Poby?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, everybody. Uh, that's a good start for the year, right, Mark?
Yeah, and we'll probably be coming back earlier in twenty twenty-one. Um, after we have some conversations with the county's planning commission, um, with our new IGA. So we will probably. Try and bring back a revised, uh, twenty twenty-one three mile plan. Once we had some conversations with the county's planning commission. As per our newly adopted IGA.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, next item on the agenda is Legacy Bank Public Improvement Agreement. Uh, Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah, being an employee of Legacy Bank, I, I feel the need to recuse myself from this discussion. Um, I think I'll just, if it's all right, I'll just turn off the video and stay on mute.
Okay, thank you, Dave. This item is should the board of trustees approve adoption of resolution number seventy-four, series twenty twenty. Entitled, the resolution of the board of trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, approving a public improvement agreement with Legacy Bank for the property located at four thirty East Main Street in Buena Vista, Colorado. Mark, I believe you have this one again?
I do, thank you. Um, basically what we have before you is a public improvements agreement, which is a contract between the town and the developer. To install public improvements, um, namely their public improvements that are gonna be along East Main Street. North Court Street and the alley that is between Main Street and, uh, Chestnut Street. So. They're gonna be installing sidewalks, gonna be installing some drainage, um, making some modifications and. Probably the most notable thing about this project in particular, they're gonna be paving a portion of the alley. Between their property that is a budding Main Street and their property which is on the north side of the alley. So we'll have a small paved section. Of alley instead of just gravel. Um, with that, I would note it's approximately a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And is guaranteeing those improvements should the, um, the project, uh, not, not move forward. The town would have the ability. To do those improvements if they don't complete those. So with that, it's just a standard agreement, um, prepared by our legal department. And is, uh, one of the last remaining items that we need to have to be able to. Approve the subdivision, the public improvements and the site plan for Legacy Bank.
Uh, thank you, Mark. Questions for Mark? I have one, Mark. I don't recall. Is this something, uh, that, that I have not seen before, this type, type of agreement, or how does that usually work?
Um, public improvements are, um, uh, typical when you see subdivisions, but this is. Uh, the unique thing about this is these are public improvements that are also generated from their development of a site that doesn't. Have those public improvements already in place, namely the, the sidewalk along Court Street. So. They're proposing to put in that sidewalk and so this is an agreement to get that, those improvements that are needed, not only to support their development, but. To extend the sidewalk from Main Street north along Court Street.
Okay, and it, it, obviously it enhances their, uh, development. By all means, yes.
Yes, and this won't be the last one. You'll, you'll probably see one for South Court Social coming in twenty twenty-one.
Hey, thank you.
For the sidewalk that they're gonna be building.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, questions for Mark or comments? Motion?
Mark, will that sidewalk go from East Main Street to Chestnut?
It's going to go to the existing house where Floyd's Barbershop used to be. Um, we have some, uh, public improvements that are gonna be, uh, required to, to go in front of that house. And we're working with that property owner to get that installed. So.
These two are connected.
Yeah, we're hoping to get that sidewalk built at one time.
Okay.
Thank you, Norm. Anybody else? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seventy-four.
Thank you, Devin.
Second.
Second Nyberg. Further? Second Nyberg, further discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
And Trustee Switzer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. Let's see if I can send a chat to Dave Opie.
And mayor, while you're doing that, at some point, we will actually ask for you to come in and actually sign that.
Got you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Back.
Thank you, Dave. Next item on the agenda is trustee staff interaction. Philip, I'm going to let you start out.
I don't, I don't have much. I don't have much. I just, thank you all. I know budget's a kind of a grueling process, but it's important. And I'll just plug that I'm excited about the budget book that we'll have online through ClearGov. And Michelle's been a great leader, encouraging the staff to, to put in good detail and pictures and such. So I, but we've got budget approved, but that doesn't mean budgets complete, complete. So looking forward to that. I don't have anything else. Paula's giving me a note, though, so.
Trustee, community.
Oh, thank you. Yes, trustee involvement in the community grant process. Thank you. So if we wanted to talk a little bit about that.
Okay, Norm raised his hand. That's higher than anybody else's. Just saying.
Who wants punishment? I mean, who wants to participate?
Interested in it if I can work it in my hours.
Do you know when they meet by any chance, Philip?
You know, I really don't. I could have Joseph provide detail on, on their meeting structure. I'm sure they're pretty flexible.
Well, if you could have him get with me, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Thank you, Norm. We appreciate it. Let's hope it works out. For Cindy's sake, you know, if it doesn't work, Cindy's in. That's all I can say.
I was asking how time consuming it was.
She raised her hand higher, huh?
No, she was smiling, Norm. You weren't smiling. Okay, thank you, Philip.
Thank you.
Keep us posted on that, by the way, Norm and that. Let's make sure it works out, okay?
Okay.
Next would be, let's go ahead with Cindy. Go ahead. Do you have anything?
This is our last meeting of the year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I will end it with, thank you for all you guys do and have a very Merry Christmas. That's it.
Thank you, Cindy. And you also. Norm?
I have a question for Sean if he's still around.
Yeah, I'm still here, Norm.
Okay, on Chestnut Street, what is the town's right of way from center line on either side?
Norm, if I may, it varies. A portion, I believe, at 75. And I think we vacated some rights of way between Colorado and railroad, if that's where you're talking.
Oh, I'm just kind of curious because there's an old car parked on the south side of Chestnut. And then there's a, looks like a refrigerator or something laying there that ought to be taken care of.
What, what's the, what's the side street? Chestnut and, and what's the cross street, Norm?
Chestnut and North Court. They're across from the museum.
Next to Floyd's, next to old Floyd's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then the other thing I, I questioned, is there some way that we can put a bug in the railroad company's ear about that crossing on Main Street? It's getting a little rough there on, on one side.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do. I might have to lean on maybe a couple people, town staff to, to find the right path, but I'll jot it down right now and take a look at it and see what, see what's going on there and see who we can talk to about that.
Okay, thank you, and happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Norm. You too. Libby? You're muted, Libby.
Thank you. Everybody for their comments on the appointed staff. And I'll be getting together with Philip and, and the staff members to talk about, about those comments. If you have comments about the whole process, you could certainly send those comments to me. You might wonder such things as, what are we really evaluating? So, you know, I, I think that overall, everyone is very happy with the staff. And, you know, but all we see really is what happens in these meetings. So if you have more comments about, about questioning what we're doing or, or how to make that whole process more effective, please let me know. And then we were wondering too, if we ought to do a little self-analysis of the board. You know, as to how are we functioning as a board? And, you know, what could we do better to, to, to improve our communications or teamwork? Just, you know, make ourselves the best board we can be in the years coming up. And I just want to tell everyone to please be safe and stay well and have a good holiday.
Thank you, Libby. Philip, I suppose that would, basically, the last comment that she made would come in on our what, what we called, what, what did Mark call it?
Yeah, it's an advance, not a retreat.
That's right. So that would be the time to, for staff to address the board and myself as to what we aren't or are doing. That would be correct? Am I right?
Or if the board, yeah, if the board wants to self-reflect, that's, that's an option as well. Yeah, during that time, or talk about additional board. I guess board advances, board retreats to focus on any particular process that the board wants to pursue. So I think, you know, and we'll talk more about this in January, but I think our intent would be to have a kind of a early spring session like we typically do. And then I would propose if the board wants to pick a few topics they want to go spend more time on, that would be the time to really say, this is, we want to do that. And then those things can be scheduled.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you. And thank you, Libby.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Dean before, he's, he seems to be last all the time, but I want to pull Dean up early. Are you there, Dean?
I sure am. Yeah, thanks. You surprised me there. Yeah, evening trustees and mayor. Thanks for attending the meeting and giving your input on our budget and everything. We all appreciate that. I'll just go through my report real quick. My first note there was that Thanksgiving was pretty busy for our officers. The holidays can be a rough time for a lot of people and especially with the COVID issues. Seems to be an uptick in some things. I attended a domestic violence coalition meeting yesterday. And looking at our numbers, we were averaging about one domestic violence a month last year by this time. And so about 12. And this year, we're at 29. So it's more than doubled. So I think you're definitely seeing some rough effects in the community. This Saturday, December 12th, we're doing Shop with the Cop with Salida Police, Chaffey County Sheriff and Parks and Wildlife. We've got a ton of donations. It's done through the local Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, 43, the Upper Arkansas Valley Lodge. And we're going to meet up with a bunch of kids from our local communities and take them shopping down there in Salida and have them get some gifts for their families. So that's a really cool thing. And we'll be posting some pictures of that on our Facebook page. And thanks to all the people in the community who donated. Did a lockdown drill at Buena Vista High School on Monday. That went really well. One of the aspects of that is, a lot of studies show that for learning to take place, staff and students need to feel safe. So for us, that's a big element of that is making our school safe and making our staff and students feel safe. And our school resource officer, Megan DiGirolamo, she does a great job with, with helping with all of that and coordinating that. Couple other quick things. The Colorado Senate Bill 217 had a lot of mandates to, changes to police use of force around the country. It's something we've been training on and working with the town attorney on. They gave us some direction on that policy and we kind of got that kind of codified, I guess, so to speak. So it's official in our policy manual now that we're current with state and federal law. And in tandem with that, President Trump's executive order, 13929, Safe Policing for Safe Communities also had some similar mandates. And we would not be able to apply for federal grants unless we are compliant with that. And the Colorado Police Officer Standards and Training will be an auditor of police departments for that. So I'm glad to say that we are in compliance with all that. Did a training at Legacy Bank this morning that went well on just reviewing their protocols for safety on alarms and things like that. And we finished up our evaluations for 2020 with all the employees. Thanks, everybody, and I'm happy to take any questions and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Dean. Does anybody have any questions for Dean? All right. Thanks a lot, Dean, and take care. Joel Benson.
Hey, everybody. I don't have anything other than say thanks for supporting the staff, trustees. And I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joel, and you too. Jack, you want to go ahead?
I have nothing else to add. Thanks for all your support this year to the Board of Trustees and to my boss and the staff. And again, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and be safe out there.
Thanks a lot, Jack. Can you take care? Jeff, do you have anything for us?
Oh, I don't. It's been, I haven't said much tonight. So it's always a good meeting when I talk, talk very little. No, it's been a pleasure working for you this year. I hope everybody has a great rest of December and stays safe and healthy. And hopefully, we'll see y'all in the new year.
There you go. Thank you very much, Jeff, and you too.
Yeah, thank you.
Devon?
Yeah, I want to echo the awesome work the town staff has done this year. I know it's been a very challenging year for town as well as all of us here. So I really appreciate that and I see all the work you guys do. And I, I, I know the community also appreciates you a lot as well. So, yeah, everyone have a great holiday and hit me up if you want to go snowboarding or something.
Thank you, Devon. Take care. Michelle?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for participating as much as you did in the budget process. It was a brand new process, but it was very rewarding to be able to open up ClearGov and look at the budget and see a number of comments, realizing that you guys have been crawling through the budget, leaving comments and questions. And, and it's, it's just been very, I, I think it's been a very successful budget season. And it'll be even, even better next year. So I'm just, I've just really, and the staff appreciates the board too. Because when we asked for input or assistance, like when I asked and invited you guys to all review the, the budget and ClearGov, there was no balking and everybody was very participatory. And I, I do appreciate that. It, it makes, it makes our job harder if we can't get responses and, and input from you guys because you're our bosses. So, thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Michelle. Dave Opie?
Yeah, thanks. I, I feel the need to apologize to everybody that's here tonight. I had a lapse of judgment, made a comment in the chat room that was unbecoming of a trustee. And just, I'd like to ask for the board's forgiveness. No excuse. It was a lapse in judgment. And I, I offer no excuses. I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Earl?
Yeah, just wanted to say 2020 was very, very unique. Thanks for everyone's support. We have a great team in the town and a great board of trustees. Thank you, Devon, for joining us early mornings for our Rec Advisory Board meetings. I know those are hard for people to get to, but we appreciate the support. It's just a, you know, a great place to work. Everyone's so welcoming and, and open-minded and hardworking. So can't wait for 2021 and flush 2020 down the toilet. In some sense, I just wanted to say thank you to the town for our great holiday cards that we got this year. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Earl. Thank you very much. Paula?
I'd just like to thank everyone for their support over this year. It's been a tough one for all of us. And for a very Merry Christmas. And maybe we'll get some snow to where we can catch some snowflakes on our tongues and make some snow angels. Enjoy the holidays.
Thank you, Paula. Michael, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, you know, great work, everyone. We made 2020 as best as it could have been, I think, all things considered, and look forward to putting it behind us. So I wish you all a happy holidays and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Michael. Mark Doring?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would say thank you for the cards as well as, as well as thank you for the sandwiches today that we got. Appreciate that. Thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to not have a meeting a couple days before Christmas. Appreciate that. Thank you for giving us another planning commissioner. And there's a lot coming down the pipe. So we're going to continue to work hard to spend all this water that Sean's going to be making for us and all, all the improvements that he's going to be building for. So I, with that, I will just say thank you, everyone, and have a good holiday. And I would last like to say, I encourage you, today is Colorado Gives Day. So if you have five minutes, I'd encourage you to go to Colorado Gives and give to a charity of your choice. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mark. And good point. So he led into you, Sean. What are you bringing us?
Man, I can't be like another thanks and awesome and I'm kidding. There's no water. Sorry, everyone. We're out. Hey, follow up with everybody. Thanks, everyone. I, I really appreciate being a part of this. Yeah, and yeah, what, what a group, a great group. So, yeah, you all do a great job, wonderful board. And, and yeah, the, the people I get to work with, thanks for them too. And Jeff, thanks for everything you do as well. And yeah, happy holidays, everyone.
All right. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Sean. I will reiterate what Philip said and I, we. I know I do extremely, but I know we all do appreciate what staff does for. I know I do extremely, but I know we all do appreciate what staff does for us. And that's exactly how it works. Budget has never been better. And if Michelle says it gets easier, we'll be out of this in like, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes next time, and we won't have to even talk about it. It compared to what it was 10 years ago, Joel? This is pretty simple, pretty simple.
Your lips to God's ears.
It was simple before because we never even looked at it.
Well, okay, you got a point. You you got a point. It was it was interesting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Staff, we appreciate you a lot. I don't I don't think we can say that enough. You do. You do an amazing job, and this year was a test. It really was. Everybody have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We'll see you all, I'm sure, and in person, hopefully soon. I would entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Norm.
Second.
Second row. Everybody have a great holiday. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, take care.
Bye bye.
Bye, everybody.